Let me say that we are very grateful for the opportunity, for inviting us, and so far it's been very good. The first positive impression was the engagement with the organizing committee. I think I spoke to Otte first, and then since then, the email correspondence. And what impressed me the most was the email, the updates you sent us in regards to what the event is about, who we are going to speak to, the city, the program outline, and all of that. Right away, I even informed Mr. Ambassador that this is a team that's really working. So I want to say that thank you very much for doing that and really putting time and thought into what you are doing. We really appreciate it. Before I go on, would you want us to engage in tree or English? What would be the famous?
Both.
Some do not understand trees.
Okay, sure, that's very nice. Alright, so I won't spend too much time. The Ambassador is here. His Excellency Dr. Bafwa J. Bevo is Ghana's Ambassador to the United States, to Mexico, Costa Rica, Dominican Republic, Guatemala, Belize. There's about eight countries in total. He's the 19th Ambassador to the United States, and he's been here for over two and a half years so far. And as you know, the Ambassador has been doing a lot of work, traveling across the country, meeting Ghanaians, looking for business opportunities, looking for scholarship opportunities. I'm sure you heard about the 50% scholarship opportunity with Andrews University, University of Missouri, and many more. He also has been spearheading the Year of Return, which many of you have heard about. He's the head of the whole exercise, making sure that we drive the African-American community to Ghana. And recently, he took the Honorable Speaker Nancy Pelosi and the Congressional Black Caucus to Ghana. So if I am to itemize the things he's done as many, but what I can say is we have a very dedicated and friendly Ambassador, and I'm sure Adam and the team will attest to it. He's welcoming, he opens his door to everyone and anyone who is willing to engage and support Ghana. And that's why we are very, very excited as to what this organization is doing to help drive business to Ghana. So I won't take too much time. If you can all join me in welcoming His Excellency Dr. Bafwa J. Bevo.
May I say good afternoon to everybody? I do apologize for the fact that I'm coming from Washington DC, and therefore I couldn't bring you a little Ghanaian sunshine, unfortunately. But I guess we all have to deal with it because we happen to be in the same neighborhood. Let me start by giving you greetings from your president, his government, and all the fellow Ghanaians who are on Ghanaian territory at the moment. I'm echoing what Mr. Toto said about the fact that since we've been here yesterday, we have had some very productive engagements with the city and the county. And I would also want to register my appreciation of what is it that your organization has been doing, where everything seems to have been on some kind of a precision basis. And then also, if the way they react among themselves is anything to go by, then of course, most probably, the Ghanaians in Pittsburgh gives everybody a certain feeling that this is a community and you intend to keep it that way. And for me, as your representative in Washington, it sort of makes it easier for one to figure out as to what is it that one could do. And then also, it makes one feel like, should there be any difficulty at all, taking care of Pittsburgh is going to be easier because everybody knows where everybody could be, and therefore we could be advised as to what is it that we could do, where do we go, what do we take, and how do we do it. And I'm making this point because when there was a fire in New York, some Ghanaians perished. We didn't have any idea whatsoever as to what the extent of the fire, to whether some Ghanaians were involved or not. It just so happens that somebody wrote a complaint to the president, and in that complaint, and I got a copy, there was a phone number. So I used the phone number to track down somebody, who then passed me on to another person. And from then on, I went to the city and asked the city for support for the families and all. Unfortunately, New York was more than helpful. Anything that any city could do under those circumstances, New York did. And in the end, even the street on which that house that got burnt was, was named after the Ghanaian soldier who was trying to save some people and died in the process. So I think that level of connectivity is really very important because I have observed that sometimes a Ghanaian is walking this way and another Ghanaian is coming down this way. They pass each other without blinking and without saying. Then after they pass each other, they use the corner of their eyes to find out whether the other person notices you or not. Which is a bit weird because everything considered, we are in somebody else's country. The best form of defense is going to be in a situation where you know that maybe two doors away, there is somebody who would understand what you are talking about. That is what the connectivity should be about. And then of course, each one of us, I'm sure, knows a bit about the zongo. The zongo, for instance, originally was the place where strangers lived because they knew that if they have to have some help, they have to have the help from people who would understand them immediately. And then in fact, when I got to North America, started coming south, and they usually go to Kumasi first. For safety's sake, they usually walked in pairs. So the Ashanti said, "Omo, omo te se ntafo." And that is how the word "intafo" got commuted into the negative connotation that it has. People just didn't understand the basis of the language. So I'm particularly happy with Pittsburgh because of the fact that you give me a feeling that yes, there is a Ghanaian community here, and I want to thank all of you, and especially your executives for making this possible. Besides that, sometimes I go to some of these churches, and as usual, a lot of energy in the churches. And that is where you get, turn to your right and say, you know, "Good morning", and bless you to the person on her right or something like that. After the church service, you can bet your life that within 15 minutes, the whole place will be deserted. Because nobody stops to even say, "Oh, so how have you been?" It doesn't happen. So you begin to question as to the basis of the church community under such circumstances. So again, if you are any, as it were, reason for one to, as it were, develop a different thought as to what the Ghanaian community is about, then I hope that you would be an exemplar for other people in the other areas for them to recognize that somewhere along the line, we are all sitting on somebody else's front porch. And therefore, if we are asked as to when we are leaving the front porch, we ought to understand that we ought to have an eye on where it is that we are going. So I do want to appreciate Pittsburgh for all that. It makes my heart beat better, it makes my job a little easier. And after all, because Ghanaians generally have a reputation that they are law-abiding and all, you can always make a pitch for the fact that we need to be supported. And if I, yesterday, I think the council executive recognized the fact that maybe there is some kind of encouragement that they can give by supporting certain initiatives within the group. And I hope, and I expect, and I believe, the executives will pounce on this and make significant use of it. I have a feeling that the best I can do this afternoon is to, as it were, make myself available for you to ask anything that you like, anything that you care about, anything that is bothering you, anything that you think you should know. And I'm quite sure that if I can't answer, I certainly will. If I can't answer, then I'll get somebody else to try. I'll get somebody else to try my stuff. But I just want to have this communion with you. And please feel free, you know, to ask it the way you have it. Thanks. Victor Dinya. And you keep talking about the 50-50 scholarship. A lot of us want to send our kids and grandkids to school in Ghana for a couple of reasons, so they can learn the language. Now, a couple of years ago, there was something about free education. Now, when we send our kids to Ghana, the schools they go to are mainly the preparatory schools and whatever. I want them to go to the local school so they can actually get involved with the culture and everything. In fact, when I took my daughter home some time ago, and she saw kids being whipped, she went, "I'm not coming back." But so, my question is, with the free education, how is that going to work? Since, as you know, here, there is no such thing as free education. We actually pay for it by paying taxes on our homes and all those things. So how do we get our kids to school in Ghana in a regular school without having a situation of, well, we don't have a desk, or we don't have this, and you have to bring your own chair, do this, do that. So that's my first question. I think as for getting your kid to school, it is just particularly normal and simple. I'm quite sure you would have some relatives assuming you are not there yourself. Right. And that relative can take the kid to the school and register the kid. As for the bring a table and bring a chair, at least in my time, we didn't have that. But I think in my time, there weren't too many of us, and therefore classrooms were not, as it were, overloaded. And even now, I think it is being gradually receded because with the numbers that went into the schools because of the fee-free, you could see the glut immediately because I don't think there was any school that had a certain kind of extra tables and chairs to cope with the influx that we had. And I do believe also that as for the whipping bit, it has never been legal, but those people who believed in a certain kind of form of discipline sometimes exceeded what it was that could be considered fair punishment. I can give you an example. There was this school in the, on the Quail Ridge somewhere, and the kids, they were asked to form sentences with pronouns, beginning with pronouns. So this guy gets up and says "she", the teacher said, "Why not he?" The fact that he used the word "she", of course, as far as the teacher was concerned, said not that he was a bad boy. So he got some four big boys to come and lick him, and give him sex. Before, you know, somehow or the other, that kind of corporal punishment, though unauthorized, was usually used to, as it were, either intimidate or make sure that you didn't repeat that kind of, you know, questioning. So I think it is very rare these days to find somebody who actually is being subjected to that. And indeed, if it came to the notice of certain parents, they would take action on it. They can either go to the police or go to the school administration for the teacher to be disciplined. I mean, the school that I went to, Primary and Middle, we had this teacher, very nice man, tall, very well-built guy, called Ajman. And then I think maybe when he sees somebody, he feels he should punish the person. He will find a reason to give you a couple of lashes on the kids. But I think all in all, it is not something that is allowed in the system. And if it does happen, every parent has a right, you know, to take on bridge and report, you know, the teacher, you know, to the authorities. You start with the head teacher. If it doesn't work, then of course, you go to the school authority. But gradually, I don't think, you know, too many of us are experiencing that. But that said, we are in the kind of age, and I have a feeling that people my age started this, where some kids were called "anabak". When they are going to school, they sit at the back of a car, and then they have something that they play with these days. Everybody has some kind of little gadget, you know, in their hands. They get to the school, somebody opens the door, he hops out. At the end of the day, somebody comes, he hops in. So for most of those kids, should there be an emergency, and they said, "Well, everybody should go home on account of this or not", they can go because they don't even know how to get home. But in my time, you knew how to get home. If the bus breaks down and you can't get a replacement early enough, you walked. But this doesn't happen. And because of that, the resilience of learners, especially at the, you know, early level, becomes very questionable. And then of course, those of you who would want to, you know, send your kids back home. Because, you know, this phrase originated in London, "Abutrin kordadiye". So when, these days, parents are supposed to respect their kids, and kids are not expected to respect parents. So there is a certain kind of difficulty with regard to the interpretation of culture. And people have to be, as it were, helped to adjust. So I do accept that there are going to be difficulties, there are going to be differences and all that. But eventually, for kids, give them six weeks. They themselves will come and tell you what you can do and what you cannot do. Because of the fact that the system is open enough, and because of the interaction with other children, they also try to, you know, see how the waves moves, and they move with the waves. So if you have that, you know, a certain kind of significant difficulty, then you have to resort to using the authorities to correct it. I don't know if that answers your question.
Yes, thank you. Yes. My name is Otte Bawaki. My question goes to support what you're saying. It's about the free education. I know that the GSS moved to the SS. And now it's such that you cannot, the heads cannot admit anybody from outside because the number that they give to the authorities is the same number that the government is going to support. Therefore, if the head, take anybody apart from the number that they're giving to the head, it means it's the head that have to pay for that particular. So let's assume that he has sent a child to Ghana. How is he going to be enrolled into the system since he didn't study GSS with them? So is there a way that you can enroll a child from the United States? Because the number that the GSS give to the Ministry of Education is the number that the government is going to take care of. Now, the child didn't go to GSS in Ghana. So how will the government take care of the child who's coming from the United States or foreigners?
I don't believe that there is a guarantee on the numbers because the whole, the philosophy behind this is that the government hopes every Ghanaian education from day one to eighteen because then that covers the whole stretch of the senior secondary school. And therefore, whether you are coming from Mongolia or what have you, you still won't have entitlement to that facility. The importance is that one, you have to establish the fact that indeed you are qualified for it, either by way of heritage or by way of naturalization or what have you. And then of course, if you want to get your kid into school, even in those times when every school enrolled, there is always an enrollment period. And therefore, if that lapses, then of course, the authorities will have to find a way of, you know, getting you into it because then it affects the school's programming, it affects the facilities that could be provided, and when. So yes, there is always going to be a little hitch dependent on when, you know, you present yourself to be enrolled in school. But I don't think there would be a situation where somebody will tell you that, "Well, because you came in May, sorry", I don't think, you know, that would happen. But probably, it also depends on where you are enrolling, you know, the child. And if you are looking, and I hope that the free SHS has to do with the public system. If you would want your child to go to, what is that fancy school in Accra? Ghana International or any of those places, then of course, they also have their own set of what have you. And in fact, kids in that school are not entitled to the free SHS because that one is an option that parents make. I want to advise that every time there is some kind of difficulty like that in terms of getting a student, you know, in school or what have you, first, you know, try to resolve it with the head teacher, and the rest of it, you know, will follow. I don't think you should fret over whether your kid can go to school or not. But it's advantageous to know the stretch of the school year, when registrations are supposed to be made, and how you are going to fit, you know, the kid in.
Now, the ambassador has been there, he has enrolled in Ghana. Now, he has taken a tour. He has flown to the embassy, which we have brought, and he has checked to say hospitals, to say their Kumasi, what have you. He has said, "Embassy, which we have brought", he said, "It's taken a tour."
He said, "The toll we pay", now, he has flown there, he said, "If you are coming", now, "We are going to do it, we are going to do it, we are going to do it", now, "Why are you going to do this?" He said, "We are going to do it, we are going to do it, we are going to do it", now, "Why are you going to do this?" He said, "If you are going to do this", "I am going to do it", now, he said, "We are going to do it, we are going to do it", "And you know, we are going to do it", he said, "At the front of the car", and now, "We are going to contain it", "Even more, we contain it, we are going to do it", "So we are going to do it", "We are going to do it", "We are not going to do it", he said, "We are not going to do it", "Now, we are going to do it", "And you know, we are going to do it", "As my lady", "Now, we are going to do it", "And normally, we are going to do it", "We said, we are going to do it", "We are going to do it", "Now, he said, we are going to do it", "He said, we are going to do it", "Why are you going to do it?" "He said, we are going to do it", "We are going to do it", "So we are going to do it", "We are going to do it", "Now, he said, we are going to do it", "He said, we are going to do it", "We are going to do it", "He said, we are going to do it", "Now, we are going to do it", "And he said, we are going to do it", "Then, we are going to do it", "He said, we are going to do it", "We are going to do it", "We are going to do it", "We are going to do it", "There is a tax, a thousand", "He said, we are going to do it", 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 "We are going to do it", "We are going to do it", "We are going to do it", "Now, he said, we are going to do it",
I try to think of a related question. Do you have a embassy on the right contact for that?
Oh, maybe, 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 very simple. It's a proper contact to embassy or any issue. We start, because we are going to embassy. We are going to, he said, "We are going to do it", "Now, he said, we are going to do it", "He said, we are going to do it", "Now, we are going to do it", "We are going to do it",
Your Honor, I've been hearing a lot about dual citizenship here. I want some clarification. From the point of view of those of us here who are for better or worse half-American citizens already, how do you, you know, go about getting the dual citizenship for, you know...
Kada omu leba, ena ena mri tukwai. Eh reisi onji, adi ente osu umhumbida. They say eh kofrefre supervisor si no ma no me miha ba. And then the name said, the most senior person no ba eh no. Na se no miha eh rahmudi. And also, ah de eh o o o mani ko. And then be eh, eh jeh damu sae eh ma se eh, first of all, they say ambassador do biya ni kremo hada. Oh, nebi de ha kada, eh si one before, and I want somebody to take responsibility, I could understand that. And then be ah omo mutite bank omo ah, omo si eh de, omo ngenya de eh. And you know, Ghanaian passports are one who are your passports which have been produced within the past four years or five years or so. So maybe it's a matter of sympathy, but I think the bank manager ought to have, in the lead.
I want to extend to the ma- bank manager.
Eh no, this is one.
Yeah, yeah, wasi eh 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 yo muhambla, eh di kavla me di me eh, eh 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 lances, eh no si eh no. Eh no kofa Ghana passport to the bay, eh jeh eh blackie dia, eh no eh. Omo si eh no swamunye, eh no eh. So, eh fa sami di eh eh. Omo si eh di eh sa di eh, no to eh di eh.
No, no, eh eh, biometric, you know, the new one, green one, eh ko wasi eh, biometric. Eh na di eh o can eh, old Ghana passport, eh stand alone Ghana passport. Now, problem eh what, eh problem eh what Ghana, they say, say the policy decision eh ba. They say hasi, o si eh si eh eh the real ID eh ba. So my education now to October twenty twenty, eh na da eh real ID will be effective. They say we need real ID, now you can't go into a federal building. They say now buildings are eh ko, we see eh new real ID now eh. But they have educated and given themselves over one year to two years, actually, law not pass eh under Obama. But after now, omo eh implemented, so about three years to educate. So, the biometric, you know, because eh 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 readable, eh machine readable, you know, they can accept it. The old one, no, eh brain eh machine readable, so they don't accept it. So, instead of saying eh bit me educated, the Ghanaian masses, say this is the direction we are going. And therefore, say o kuta old one now, make sure you go for the new one. We don't do that, and that's the problem as a country, we always face. Eh ti ni pa lo ka ku drew bank omo na institution, o neveka cho eh yenjibim. Ni wa like the ambassador oh say, it's a valid passport. Ah, o di tu ah, o di ku tu kwa kwa bochira eh je. Ba wa o kro, o say onji, it doesn't make sense, ni na eh, policy incohesion eh, eh wo yen implementation moni eh de eh. It is a very good feedback, I think eh, we have to take back to make sure eh, eh educate eh the public about eh.
And eh, eh wa di eh na oka say eh ma, odi one. Oh, eh ma ma ka kachi ba no eh no, eh na embassy eh, eh koli wa. Ne ma no mu di ja no mu ko no mu ba ne eh de eh, no say, o bi oha, asamo eh de be ba say bohano eh. O ti omo say eh adi eh eh ni eh. Now, it oh pa, o de na tu eh no, wa che che eh no bi eh. Ya omo ah wa tiye say. Wa tiye say eh we eh no eh gua, o gua eh we eh koko. O no eh ni eh di eh wasi eh eh juet miha bo. Odi eh, odi eh oka ku kere na, eh de odi eh ju ma say eh sa di eh. So eh, eh ba eh ti miha bo eh. Eh jeh eh se me eh o she eh eh ma eh o she eh eh pa pa eh de eh. Eh 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 pasas eh, especially eh ma me fone, oh, oka di eh eh eh. O di eh shah eh eh say eh, o di eh kwa na eh mu me fwa klan se eh. O no eh ti cha buchewa eh eh say eh, o wa tu eh.
Exactly.
It's that kind of attitude, and you eh no omo di eh emse eh like eh, I only know what to say.
Eh bu she ah fu eh wo Ghana show, eh wa eh, eh na me mane ma ni wo mo, na krakaka. And I'm saying, if you see difficulty si dia. Me eh arka sa me ko Ghana, si me ko eh no, eh na, you can see me pamni eh me pi merem, eh na, osendi ni sikha. Sikha no, eh de be, na oti ne di sikha no. Omo si eh di san des eh no, omo tiye say. Now, Ghana, ya wo abrofudin eh gre, ya wo blue, ya wo Williamson, ya wo eh, kofu eh pre, especially eh na eh eh slave trade eh abrofudin eh gre. Kope pi kuta eh eh eh, abrofudin. Eh ti eh di eh ni eh no, o fe si ka eh iman eh. Be di ah, o ni eh basa, be bi eh ti eh so 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 eh pa wa. Eh ne bank eh me bi eh koi di sikha no. Eh ne no, eh ne eh no omo fe ja o Ghana pa eh sana, me eh ba eh si eh. Me ba eh eh so, na eh si eh, me manu omo si ka no ma oso ba eh, omo so no ko eh, eh si eh fe si ka eh ma eh. Eh si eh uku san des eh no, eh di ma kwa eh eh uku noha. Eh na omo si koma me ba eh eh no, ma bete na ha eh eh di ma. Si si eh ma reta me ni eh di ma, eh si eh di social security, eh di me retirement eh si ka, that is my income. Eh ti me ti me eh sendi si ke biya, me person eh sendi komo eh biya. Me uku eh brising wa eh, omo bu sa sa eh question eh no. Say, eh ti se eh no, me eh krof, me ti eh sendi omo si ke biu, because omo kwa eh eh fama omo. Omo si eh eh kodi eh 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 bank, commercial bank, eh, eh da ba eh be bas eh no omo kodi no, eh eh the forest below ni eh ma ni eh ma ha be. Eh money grab, money grab, eh fe si eh eh program eh.
Eh be fe say eh, eh de, you know, maybe one of those companies can solve that problem. But eh de eh, eh be fe say eh na o can eh, based on the facts, eh all the sanders. Eh, could you not?
Omo si eh san besi eh eh no eh.
Eh 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 that's unfortunate, eh be say sometimes, omo eh omo eh. Ya no omo be say eh omo eh no, to feel important, they have to give somebody a lot of grief. Because, you know, we say eh anishwa, but if you encounter that eh eh bank counter, you ought, it ought to be resolved by eh. Eh de eh, the bank supervisor and the manager. If eh be ah oye eh eh person, eh the bank manager eh no, eh that was eh, you know, that eh, it's one of these eh institutions, but. One measure eh, would also pass it through, you know, the the system, the government. Your name cannot actually be eh a stumbling block when they could be proven. So eh no eh eh ba, eh da eh, so omo bu sa eh eh mother eh now eh internet eh this guy, omo ka go eh eh to dance.
Because in fact, as for corruption, there is always a giver and a taker. And if somebody is prepared to give and somebody is prepared to take, it is going to be very difficult to sort it out. I can tell you that the first six months that President N'Golo was in office, if you tried to offer a policeman something on the street, the guy would make sure that you end up in the police station. After six months, it became like business as usual. And people started doing, you know, whatever it is that we have. So sometimes, it's one of these problems that if you are not very careful, all of us will end up respecting that who had this money here. That kind of thing. It's like a colleague ambassador told me once, we were talking about problems at borders in certain countries. And we were talking about, somebody was talking about in Nigeria, a guy puts his passport down and this officer goes through and says, how many days are you spending? So, a couple of weeks. So he pushes the passport aside and starts processing other people. After a while, he comes back with her passport. How long did you say you were staying? Say a couple, what do you mean a couple? Tell me how long you are saying a couple, couple, what kind of couple? Then you push him back. The next guy who was after this guy, you know, just launched him. Slipped some ropes, you know. So he did. Oh, how long did you say you were staying? Couple of weeks, the stamp went in. Then the ambassador was like, yes, that was too cumbersome. In Kinshasa, the guy goes through the passport and then he gives it back to you. And he tells you that one page is missing. So, you know, that, you see, it's hard to say human from. You know, in countries like this, it's to a certain people. And suddenly next time, it's even worse. You know, it's a Nigerian friend who told me that that's when the Ghanaianians, when they are talking about bribes, they talk thousand, thousand. In Nigeria, we talk millions. You know, it's a state of mind, it's a certain kind of what have you. But then, we cannot afford it. Not to the extent that people say is happening now. And in fact, that double salary is one of the things that for me, you know, acts. Because that one, you could make it up, you know, in two days. Because you have the, you know, the information. And you ought to be able to prescribe whatever it is that, you know, ought to be served. But we haven't done it. The special prosecutor complains that he has been hampered by administrative processes inside. I haven't met him since he was appointed to ask him. But actually, I do know that at the time that he was appointed, I was asked what I thought about his appointment. And I thought he probably was the best for the job. But maybe like, I don't think, some of us are equally disappointed. You mean you haven't spoken to him for him to give me the facts of the matter? So I think that, as for the issue of corruption, it cannot be an issue that the government alone should handle. Because it is with us. And therefore, citizens also ought to express a certain something about it. The problem with most of us Ghanaians is that, when the issue is on the table, we discuss it with our wives and children at home. When it comes to the public forum, we behave as if we are not there. Eh, you know, that kind of attitude. So maybe, just maybe, you know, we ought to stoke the government to be able to do something about the issue that we care about. But I don't think more than is stoked. Because before you could do something, I'm quite sure that, and I have been in administration for eight years before, I used to run the tourist board. And you sack this gentleman for very clear reasons. For the next four days, you'll probably get about five people, some of whom will come and inform you. Oh, you know this gentleman that you have sacked? You know, he is the child of, you know, Joe Mace's former wife, a whole string of relationships. And therefore, you would have to consider rescinding the decision. And when you have that continuously for a week, you have to be a toughie, you know, to stand against it. But that is what, you know, one of our problems. Is a kind of social, I don't know how to classify it, but it's one of these things that we have this social penis. In whoever. That kind of thing. So somehow, if you are not careful, you will be cornered. I had a personal experience of sacking a driver who also happened to have been a chief in his hometown. And I sacked him only because apparently, he always has something missing on his vehicle. But this particular, this particular, I think, the thing that were missing were so many that the administration didn't have any choice but to come and inform me because the expenditure that would come through, they believe I would notice it, you know, and ask questions. So they came and told me that he said he was in the streets in Accra and he needed to go to the mess. And when he came back, two tires had been taken out. Heavy equipment, you know, what have you, what have you. So I said, and I see him, so he comes. Oh, Mr. Sapporo. Now how? Eh, you are getting, you're too careful now. So chief, you can call baby so. And you know, call baby, so who decide it to you, you know. So chief, you can call me there. They call I have. So I called the head of administration. He said, Papa, your brain is a problem. Why not call them? You need it. The B S S A demand will fear heavy and no famine. And they become, they say we want anymore and tell me. So that is what happened. Two weeks later, I see this Sapporo. This Sapporo had a chief, not someone in the country, say here, we may do the. So maybe that's the sort of, oh, you know. So we did complete the, we need for Saudi. So the brother, that's a good one, you too. Ah, chief, I don't know my idiot. At the time that he was doing, he knew that everything he was doing was wrong. But somehow, he wasn't expecting anybody to pay attention. And that unfortunately, is the Ghanaian character. I don't know how we've managed to get that. Because when I was a boy, you drop a piece of paper on the street, a school came will follow you to come and ask you to pick it up. The so-called disamansama was all over the place. And people made sure that in Kumasi, you cannot cross the street if it's not a zebra crossing. Now, some people get in the middle of the street and then they send that the cars to. It's that kind of indiscipline and I don't know how we managed to get that far. And disrespectful of the rules and the regulations and the law. And everybody goes along with it. Oh, now we can create, so now I, you know, that kind of thing. So please, I think a lot of it depends on what we do and how we see it. You know, we know cancer. Eh, I don't care, I don't care, I don't care. I don't have a question, maybe I don't, I don't know who says so can hurt. Because, yeah, a lot of you know, it's not that going to let you go. So please, maybe some of the things that you rub off or have rubbed off on you, you should try and export it to Ghana. But the problem that we also have is that some of us, we stay here for whatever, get used to a certain way of doing certain things which works for everybody. We do Ghana in fairness to the person for the next three weeks, one month. All that you might hear in the corridors. After some two months, you find that the person is even worse than the Ghanaians are doing. Somehow, we have to start, we have to start fast. And I think your example, whichever way you look at it, is bound to rub off on somebody. And maybe gradually, we can get back to those times when people did what they were supposed to do at the time they were supposed to do then and that kind of thing. I mean, when, you know, you go to class one, class two, class three, face on Monday morning at assembly, they look at your teeth, they look at your fingernails, they look at your uniform and order. If the teachers find it unsatisfactory, back home. But now, you wouldn't get, you know, even expect to see some kids', you know, teeth or what have you. The parents will probably come to the classroom and beat you up. So we are having some difficulties in terms of a certain clash of cultures and a certain kind of homegrown indiscipline. That one, we all have to continue to solve.
Yes, thank you so much, Ambassador. I have, since you're talking about indiscipline, I wonder if you talked to the proverbial Ghanaian? Because that's one thing that concerns me a bit. For as long as we've been in this country, you said when the good things rub off us, maybe it's a good thing to take back home. But this is one thing that we infamously battle with, you know. And if you can talk to that and maybe kind of encourage us or say something that will get us to maybe begin to change our minds or something. Because that is, I believe, one of the biggest veins to our development, even in the diaspora.
Well, it is a big problem for us. And somehow, you get the impression that it is an African white problem. It doesn't mean that it is acceptable or justifiable. But I think, again, it depends on, you know, all of us. I have a feeling that if we decided that the meeting starts at four. And it just so happens that, like in these parts, the weather is a bit severe. You may want to make an allowance of some fifteen minutes or so. But if everything is sort of normal, if it says four o'clock, even there are three people, you start at four and you don't repeat when others start to be in. They have to pick it up as it were. And one of the sweetest things I've heard since I came here was that I went to Wusten, went to Wusten, Massachusetts. But before then, I had had some meetings with the universities and that kind of thing. So when we're going to have some kind of a town hall meeting like this, I understand somebody went around and, hey, ambassador, where are your table? So by the time I got there, the room was packed full. Everybody says, I'm usually on time and usually I try to be on time. So I think we just have to cultivate it. And the fact that we have this initially kind of culture. And usually, those people who come in very late are the very people who run from the back, come through here because you spotted one chair that is not filled. In the process, they disturb everybody. But I think you can, as an organization, decide that the meeting starts certainly not five minutes later than the stated time. If there are only two of you, the secretary and the chairman, you start. By the time they come, you probably have gone through two items on the timetable and you don't repeat it. If we write minutes, when they get that minute, then they will know what happened. Yeah, but it's attitude now. And because we always tolerate it, nobody seems to think that there's something wrong with it. Because Ghanaians work here. In the winter, they are supposed to start at seven. Ten minutes to seven, they are there. The same Ghanaian works in Accra. He's supposed to start at nine. He comes in at ten fifteen. Oh, I couldn't get dropped from, or it was drizzly. When the snow is ten inches in Wisconsin, Africans go through that, no, to work. If it drifts a bit, they stand by the side of some building, expecting the rain to stop. And they believe that that is a good excuse. And after having come in at that time, a friend comes to visit at eleven fifteen, stays till about twelve twenty, sees the friend off, then goes to lunch, comes back at about two fifteen, three thirty, takes the bag. While, but if I don't leave early enough, I won't get transported. So you are paying the person for a day's work and the person works for ten minutes. But we still allow that to happen. And this is a country where the average person in government service has a thirty days of annual leave, can ask for casual leave, can ask for compassionate leave. So in the end, we have so much holiday that we begin to wonder why we employ people by the year. Pumped ourselves to accept. So there is a certain kind of review of how we do our business, which I think a lot of us have not been bold enough to take on. Well, last one, I guess, and I say, electoral commission. Connection with Africa, the ability of citizens to vote. Now, the whole thing revolves around the fact that if we can organize, you know, citizens to vote. Maybe the reason is if we are able to help people from Namibia to start to voting in Ghana, there's no reason why we cannot organize Ghanaians to vote in the election. But the problem is, and it's one of the things I was going to ask you for help. It is difficult to get a certain kind of information on Ghanaians in this country. The passport says, register at the nearest, at the consulate or whatever that we have. Most people don't. And therefore, even with this election, it is going to require that we know where citizens are. And in that case, how to organize, you know, the exercise of a franchise. Because you certainly cannot have a voting booth in every corner of this country for Ghanaians to vote. But the information that will help to locate where people can conveniently vote in, we don't have. Who besides software now? So one or more and the congregation. So it ought to be possible for them to give us. And all that we are asking really is the name, the location and the contact number. But they wouldn't give it. Because somehow or the other, and with all apologies, some of them believe that the church is their business. So they don't want anybody to have the information on their current account. And then, of course, Ghanaians, you know, are casual. Eh, officers on their, to the end, so we've been who and the normal man. So they wouldn't do anything. Now, that backing it on the passport issue that we are talking about, would you have? Yes, or the forms now. But the address on the form is incorrect, the telephone is incorrect. So you can't even contact the person. But on the move, no, we should really can't complain. So in order to purpose, by, I'm saying this, this, this. Recently, you know, even one of the American government departments said, one more day, application seventeen, a break. And then we retained the applications. But there are sixty, and of course, not at the Unabank. The office says that that person physically came to collect cash who denied to me call for the, only we're major. So that creates a certain kind of impasse. And I also know, part of the complaint, but the predominant complaint was that, and now all the O R player, and now on second, now ring you up. But it's true. The problem that, you know, we have, and it's evident in this country that we are in, our telephone system is exceptionally a kick. And until, if you call, like most of us, so afraid, not simply, I say, this is a nice one. But I'm here, call your website, but aside from me to you now, I know that. The person will still want to hold a conversation with you for you to take him or her through. So if the person is on the phone for twenty minutes, anybody who calls within that twenty minutes will not be answered because the line is tied up. It's now that, you know, we are trying to sort it out. And you see, you wouldn't be privy to what it takes to even spend a certain little bit of money to rectify an issue which could ought to be sorted out in a couple of days. So we have that kind of problem. And because most people wouldn't understand it, the basically activity to the fact that people are lazy, people are irresponsible, people are this and people are that. I mean, somebody told me the story of a lady in Korabi who sent a passport for a visa. And I think there was a time when I insisted that if anybody applied for a visa, the longest time it should take is three days. So the woman got her passport back. And as soon as she got the passport, she called a friend. Before she opened the passport, they recognized, oh, the visa is, so she called the person back. You know, to triumphantly report that she made a mistake. So we have these, you know, little niggles insofar as doing the business is concerned. And then we also have a lot of competitors who are aware, they are aware that they need to be in Ghana on the twentieth of December. Either because they are going on holidays or the wife's uncles, you know, their relative died and all that and all that. So they have a certain body of time to organize. Yet, they will put in the paper some three days before they are supposed to leave. And the pressure of issuing one visa is itself another matter. So sometimes, with the best of worlds, you are not going to be able to meet the preferential time of some of the people who apply. And then they wouldn't even want to know why you couldn't process. They would rather complain. And these days, you know, people use the social or social media to just lambaste everybody and anybody. So I think there are a whole lot of issues pertaining to that. But I can only sort of promise you that we are going to do everything that it takes to make sure that the system runs a bit smoothly. This particular time, because of the year of return, if you spend one day in the consulate section of the embassy, you will probably feel so sorry for them that you would probably take all of them out after all that is done. It is difficult, but we have to, you know, keep on pushing it. Yeah, so I do apologize for those who have been unhappy for some of these things, but.
Just a quick follow up to that. My name is Felix and I actually have a personal experience of that happening to me. I have to literally fly from California to New York and look through people's passports for mine. And I called and, you know, could not get anyone on the phone. But going through all that, I wondered how could we make it better, right? And I was trying to figure out a way that I can donate my time to help solve that. But I could not get anyone in contact to be able to do that. And so my question is, is there anyone who I can reach out to, you know, in your, in your organization to be able to say, hey, I have this skill set that I can help you to try to make this, you know, smoother? Is there anyone that I can talk to? Or is there, is there any program like that where people, professionals like me, who, you know, are knowledgeable in the tech space, can, you know, actually reach out and donate our skills?
I do believe that if you indicated what kind of period you are prepared to donate, that we can take you on for that period as a new term and then give you the opportunity to help us solve some of these problems.
So I'm actually referring to it from the perspective of, so my company actually has programs that they're able to actually go into, you know, governments or, you know, city programs. Sometimes we even go to the police station and help them, you know, build technology systems to be able to take calls en masse. Because obviously, a lot of people calling to the police station want to be able to triage the calls better, right? So this is, I'm looking for a way that we can potentially get into contact with the right people to set up like a link where we could send engineers from our company to be able to actually provide like free, you know, technical support, to be able to, you know, actually build up these systems. You know, you were saying the phones are a cake, to be able to like help modernize that so we can actually get it to, you know, be working efficiently for everyone.
That would be most welcome and you can, you know, get the attention.
So he's a guy to talk to, okay.
And he will link you up with the right person at the embassy.
Okay.
And thank you very much for the opportunity.
All right, so my question has to do with Ghana card. When are we going to get a chance to register those of us out of Ghana? When are we going to get a chance to register, to get our card, for the Ghana card?
Citizenship card?
No, the Ghana, yes, the national ID card.
National ID card. Well, there was a promise that, you know, the.